I thought he was saying to be here really long time.
Right there.
Everybody saw it.
We're even.
Spending the night.
Yeah.
One of them has five, I can't remember which one.
Uh huh.
Go ahead and call a meeting to order, start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and ever being themselves for all.
Davis?
Here.
You're in, you're in, you're in? Brown?
Here.
So let's keep here.
All right. Go ahead and open a public comment at six oh one.
General Act point six forty over road, um, point of order.
What did you say?
This is not an agenda.
Oh.
The court is not requiring for special meetings.
I agree. There are benefit to the board.
What else did you say?
They're not required for any reason, but they are benefit to the board.
Okay. Yeah, if you can, if we can't hear you guys until we get microphones, please. Look at microphones. So there's no agenda, but I thought what was posted was salaries and...
Yeah, that's, the items we're doing, that's why they're listed as for the special meeting.
Okay.
That counts as the agenda for the special meeting. Those are the three things.
You're right, but, okay. So, um, Rosemary Sporto, um, with your salary and wages and stuff, um, what was posted online, your resolutions, um, there's several errors in there. Like on the treasures one, the resolution from the treasurer, you have a date of two oh two three four under, um, be it resolved, then as of April first, two oh two three four. Plus each one of the resolutions, you have the heading of the position, clerk, the treasurer supervisor. But then down in the body, it says the salary of the office of the supervisor on all of them. Instead of the salary of the treasurer, the trustee.
He should just fill out supervisor and this.
Oh. Well, yeah, under both.
They'll be corrected as well.
Under whereas and under be it resolved. Um, and then I find it a little, I don't know, um, under the nays are already non-applicable. So you're assuming that everybody is gonna vote yes?
Like I said.
Or the excused is non-applicable, you were assuming that everybody was gonna show up?
No, actually, what I do is I write down, so if there is a nay, I will write the nay down and then this will transfer to the actual, the actual cases, just for me to...
Okay, the nays is blank, so you know, it's like you're assuming they were just gonna vote yes.
Well, no, because if, if they votes no or whatever, I just cross that off in my writing, no.
Good.
It was just...
And I also, um, you know, looking at all of this and this just like being brought up, um, again, and I, and I kind of talked about it last year, there needs to be an independent study done of the surrounding area of the township, what the supervisor, clerks, trustees all make. Um, so I think that the board should appoint an independent committee, not have anybody on that committee that is getting a salary or a pay of anything, and have that committee look at everybody's salary. The board, the fire department, the planning, anybody that gets, the deputies, anything that the township is paying for salaries, I think the committee should review and come up with a recommendation and bring it to the board instead of, I don't know where you're getting your numbers from.
Um, Laura Terminal, um, I have several questions, but I wanna kind of let you guys do your discussions first, so I don't know if, I mean, I don't wanna say names and then it's already part of your discussion. So I'm not sure what the process is, if you're gonna discuss each thing and then take public, like, discussion on that, or do I speak now or forever hold my teeth?
We can talk. We can ask questions during the meeting, is the way I understand it.
You can, you can do... Technically, you're not supposed to, but, I mean, we usually, we usually don't push you guys out, so...
Okay.
Technically, in our policy, it says they can.
We can.
Specifically says in our policy, they can join in the conversation again with time limits if necessary. For each item?
Yeah.
For any, for any agenda item, any business item, new or old.
Much discussion so amongst the board and public, that's what the policy states.
Either way, we've been doing that, so...
Yeah.
So I'd rather just wait till I hear you guys what you're saying before I...
Okay.
All right, any other public comment?
The show sharp one nine seven five one, Golden Drive, Interlock Inn. Um, I'm just wondering if there's, you know, if there's a declared amount of hours for each position to justify the pay, um, if this is already allocated in the budget, is that something that is gonna move out our taxes?
Yeah. Uh, that's why I added this, and it kind of shows the highlighted areas, that's the part of the taxes the township gets. We don't set the prices for the taxes, we are responsible for collecting them, but...
Well, other than, that's the actual board itself, there are fire departments and...
Right.
That's separate, so those are like the money that comes into the township for operating the township.
Yeah, so, and this is on a taxable value of one hundred thousand, two hundred and forty-six, it was just the most round number I could get to, kinda makes the math easy, so people compare it to their own house, but, yeah, we basically get ninety bucks for every hundred thousand dollars for the property value in the township. That's what we get to operate out of. So, we don't raise taxes, lower taxes, uh, the only thing, like, right now, we're taking, uh, basically seventy-four cents on every thousand dollars, and that goes down every year that we take less percentage. Property value is going up is what's raising taxes.
We can set the township tax, right? We can vote and the board can change that.
Don't rate the...
We can't go higher.
Right, we, we can vote, put it to the voters. Right. Yes.
Okay, my other part of the question was, um, I know, is there a specific number of hours besides office time that is open at the township here per clerk, supervisor, treasurer?
I mean, it's kinda as needed, like...
There are some statutory requirements by law, so the treasurer is required by law to be here two eight-hour days at the last tax day of summer season, which is September fourteenth, the last day of winter taxes, September first, February fourteenth, sorry. I'm required by law to be here eight hours. The clerk has hours that if she's required to be here before an election, one day for eight hours, to register people, I believe, and so average, there's one to three. Other clerks I've talked to said that they usually count on that being two, so it's comparable. What's required? The other hours for office, we're not required to hold any office hours, we are only required to get our jobs done in the town. So basically, we're willing to have the public come in those hours, and if the public wants us here more hours, especially like, well, I'll speak for myself, I would come in more hours. But I am always here, usually four to six hours more than my posted office hours every week. I try to not post them so that I can concentrate on the things that I don't want to be interrupted, right, so I can stay focused on that. But I will always take, people see my card, they know I'm here. I was here today during the day and two people came in and paid their taxes, another one right before this meeting. So I always take them, I will always help, I always put the open sign on the door, I just don't post them so I can do it at my convenience and also so I can concentrate on the work more. Make sense? Yeah.
I know, I roughly do about thirty hours a week between my eight hours here, answering calls of, you know, this guy's got too many horses and I gotta drive out and look at it, road commission meetings, county meetings, things like that. That's my average. I haven't actually timed it out since I very first started, but it hasn't changed much. If anything's gone out, so... And we're here a lot.
I'm here, yeah. We've been elected to time here more, but, yeah. Plus I've been home answering calls and cemeteries and, you know, different things like that, so... But we're always available by phone, so...
It was, um, last year's pay raise for you guys, um, I know one thing for the clerk was basically to be here for election and that time, I believe we did not have an election period.
We have an election, just think that it's part of this fiscal year.
Yeah, we, I'll admit, I kind of jumped the gun on that, 'cause the way it sounded was the nine days was coming a lot sooner.
Yeah.
We thought it was gonna be on the last two elections and then it wasn't, but now it is in place on this election, so...
They only chose, they only wanted certain areas to be open for the nine days as test areas, so we didn't acquire them.
So your pay raise, we think, on that there was gonna be, you know, all seven days.
Right.
For, for one election, and that's in February.
The local elections are not required to have a nine day.
And that was voting time.
Yeah.
But we always need that nine days for locals, if we want.
Not, but we did it last year.
Right, but...
Yeah.
Who makes the decision?
The one in February is still part of this fiscal year, so it won't be as important.
So the clerks, when, when you're here for election, you're just getting your clerk salary? You don't get an election worker salary at all? Nobody was brought up.
No, you can, you can, when you're working as an election person. It, it now allows you to get paid.
If you're an inspector in the voting area, but when I'm here all day sitting in the office on election day, I just get my regular salary.
So is there a, do you have a set, like, duties, are you in here? Or are we only ever just paying your clerk salary and that's it? Or are we paying you also for some inspector time?
I have it charged, um, I'm approved to be here as an inspector in case there's an emergency and something happens where they need someone in here, because we have to have that balance of two parties, and depending on what's going on, um, I do come in when we break, when a couple of the people wanna go take a break and so we can rotate, but I'm in the office so that if there's someone who needs to register to vote, or someone who has, needs to fix something before they can vote, then I'm in the office from open to close, so...
So you're in there being paid clerk salary?
Mm-hmm.
And then there's election people in here being paid election salary?
They get wages, fifty dollars an hour.
So the increase was based on the fact that you're gonna be in there at least nine extra days full a year, even though you, like you said, you jumped ahead, but basically it was for, in November, you're gonna be here nine full days, right? And you're just gonna be getting the same salary.
Right. You're gonna work the full days, all nine days?
Or some, I mean, I had to, the way, well, all of this stuff came to light just in the past couple months, that now they're not requiring you to be here, you have to be available to be into the office if someone calls you, you have to be there, you have to come into the office whenever someone calls you.
Right, so my understanding, it could be the clerk or the deputy clerk has to be able to get to this office in a reasonable amount of time.
But I forever be here for most of it, except when I had that my other job.
And that was considered for your pay raise last night. But...
But it didn't happen, because it was, there was no nine day.
There, there is, an election in this fiscal year.
Right.
Yes, but from April until February, you gotta pay those extra...
Right, because we can't, we can't get, this was tossed around at our, in the first meeting and we went to the state, that we get a separate salary for those three months where we are required to have nine days. Having a separate salary for our statutory duties is illegal, so, um, we cannot do that. So what the discussion was is we take, okay, if we have three elections, let's take this much money for each election and put it into our total salary so that we get split over twelve months.
So how, when do you earn the election pay?
When we have the elections.
No, because from my understanding...
You can't get, I can't, you cannot get more than your salary.
That's not the way I understood it, that you get the, yeah, either, that you get the election pay if you're here working as an election director.
As inspector, now, we're talking about clerk responsibility, statutory duties.
Right.
That's different than an election inspector.
Because if she's an election inspector, then the deputy's gonna be, gotta be on call, because an election inspector cannot register somebody that day or at that same time.
So, so that we don't have to pay someone else to, to go in and do registrations and stuff. I'm gonna be available most of the time.
All right, so I was told by another township, and I'm just trying to understand all this, that they're putting a lot of those duties onto their deputy because the state will reimburse deputy pay, but they won't reimburse clerk pay.
I have not heard that.
I haven't heard that one either, about them not reimbursing.
Reimbursing the election inspectors.
They are reimbursing the inspectors for the nine days of the election.
But the inspector can't be in here and then run and register somebody?
Correct.
Correct. The supervisor person can't do that. It has to be someone who is not working in the election.
So I, I'm just trying to...
So, I thought we were here to discuss...
Right.
The salaries, not, not how we do...
Right, 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 right. So my, so my question is, because we're voting in pa, we're voting for the future salary, right?
Right.
So if you, and just, like, hear me out, so if you are, you are saying that you're going to be here the whole nine days, and you make your salary according to that, come December, when the position may change hands, is that, that, well, then, if that person, okay, November, if that person decides that they don't want to do that, we can't require them to do that, right? So then we are now paying them that pay, and we might have to pay somebody else to be here those nine hours or nine days as well.
That's right.
Because we can't hold you to that. So even if you win again and you change your mind, we can't hold you to that, right?
Right, it's just like any of this.
Well, for office hours, we still have to do our duties.
Right.
So why is it considered part of your salary?
Elections are part of my statutory duty. I am required by law to do elections, just like Teresa's required by law to do taxes as the treasurer.
Well, you're not required by law to be here for the whole nine days, is that what you said?
Yeah.
That, if, that came down, that said that you don't have to be here the whole nine days, but we have to be available to be here.
You're on call.
We're on call for nine days. My plan, I'm not leaving the inspectors here by themselves on this new early voting. I never left them on election day. I don't have to be here all day election day either.
So that shouldn't be considered part of the salary increase? Just because you're, you're saying you're gonna be here doesn't mean...
That's not, that's right, that's not what part of it is, part of it is, because we have to be here.
For the raise last year.
But that is what all the courts have done.
There was so much confusion last year...
There was.
As to what was going on, even at the state get-together over in Hackme, the day that we were having all this discussion, they still had nothing final, nothing.
When you asked the budget, when everything was up there.
So everybody was just, okay, so what do we do, what do we do? Because there was nothing from the state saying, this is the way it's gonna be, they kept moving it, this could be this, or this can, oh, no, this can't, it was just total confusion. So that's, that's part of the problem, is that we did not have set guidelines coming down from the state that didn't change at the last minute.
And do we know that these aren't gonna change, or these guys don't know, right?
We don't.
Can I, can I jump in, 'cause...
Oh, ahead.
Hopefully I'm the only one here that's still a bit confused.
No, I'm still.
But let me, let me try to recap it in my head. Regular clerk duties, assigned clerk duties, set by salary, anything else, you know, we want you to paint the room, we can contract you to do it separately.
That's done as a wage.
You know, as, as a wage. From what I understand, it could also be done as a salary to paint the room, and you figure out how long it's gonna take you, you know, boom, as opposed to paying you hourly, but again, separate from your clerk duties. For the elections, what we've been talking about in the nine days, those are part of your statutory duties that you have to perform, but it's not, you're not gonna be here, you're not required to be here all nine days, nine to five, whatever the hours are, correct?
Right, that just, that's what we learned over the past couple months.
Okay.
Because we've been going, we've been having our court meetings and these questions have all come up and then, and then this...
And therefore, because it's part of your statutory duties, we can't pay you fifteen bucks an hour for when you're here.
Sitting in the office, no.
Uh, well, if you're, if you're sitting in the office doing...
That's my statute.
Your, your clerk stuff, non-voting, you, you can go sit in your office and you're...
As you're supposed to. I can be here.
You can be here as a clerk, but if you're here doing the nine days of voting, you're still a clerk and you can't be paid extra for, for the time you're here.
Right, unless I work as an inspector, which I...
But that's not part of the...
That is not part of a clerk duty.
That's not part of the nine day.
Right.
So we're actually, gave you a raise because you said, I wanna be there. Well, because she's not on call. Does a clerk have to be on call?
Yes, yes.
Or she's not called for nine days?
Or, or her, everything?
If I can't make someone that is qualified to vote.
And if you can't be here, then we have to pay somebody extra.
Yes.
So why should you get a raise for something that could not happen? That is just your choice to say, well, I'm gonna be here, but hey, if something happens, we're gonna have to pay out double, yep, and you're still getting paid, yep.
And that's what happened with the recall election, I still couldn't pay, you paid somebody four thousand dollars to do it for us.
Only because the deputy refused to do it.
Yeah, the deputy, she refused to do it, and now we had to hurt somebody outside.
But we're not talking about that, we're not arguing about that.
Okay.
Well, we are, a, a fact here that this is, this is what happened.
That happened, that, that happened. Doesn't happen every time. You shouldn't be paid for some every year because, oh, you know, maybe I'll be here, maybe I will, but I plan on it.
And the board might require her to be here. No, we can't. And it could change, like I said, if, you know, like, even if I change my office hours to be here twenty hours a week, when the new treasurer possibly comes in at the next election, nobody can hold her to those hours.
She can hold.
She can come and say, I don't wanna do any office hours.
Right.
And as long as her job is done, you could say, no, we're not okay with that, so we're gonna recall her, 'cause we don't feel she's, you know, whatever, but you can't make me be here. So I want to be here, right, to be, you know, for you, to have an opportunity to come pay your taxes or to ask questions, whatever, so...
And I think most people that are elected to their job want to be here.
Right.
And the only reason that we would not be here, illness, death in the family, sudden emergency coming up, otherwise, we're here. I mean, that's my job, I'm here.
Well, it sounds like it's not your job to be here.
Well, it's my job. Court meetings are required here, court meetings are required, all the summers are not, so, oh, sorry.
Yeah, they don't hold ours all the time.
Yeah.
And by appointment only.
Yeah, so, yeah, there are townships that will operate on appointment only, that one township only, the treasurer holds on this hour, the every other position is by appointment only, so...
And I think she only holds, what, your six hours?
I think she holds three hours of, what, a week?
Well, I'm asking because, like, we had talked... Well, I'm asking because like we had talked, if somebody else asked, what is the normal pay, what is the average pay? I'm looking it up, lining the average Michigan pay for clerk, blah, blah, blah. Clerk is twenty-two thousand four hundred eighty-four, where, you know, a treasurer's twenty-two thousand two hundred, the trustee's eighty-one dollars, and the supervisor's twenty thousand and sixty-five.
Let me help you with some of that. In the past years before most of the board that's sitting here was here, our supervisor would go and collect that information, and a lot of it is not just based on state things, it's also how much is in your county or in your township. Because you can't base us against someplace in Detroit. It's not going to be the same base. So you've got to find the median.
Percent average.
Right, that goes with our-
But by comparable townships in this area, we are by far the least paid. And, well, coal taxes still even half our population. But-
You know, there, there's a wide range of people in Detroit.
Large part of it is also the property value here. We don't have, I mean, with the state land and everything being involved, we don't have the tax base that like Benzonia has, you know, to pay their supervisors sixty-five thousand to do, to do that, to be supervisor and take care of the weed places.
But he has two licenses for expanding all the marijuana places there, and marijuana places are also contributing to their tax base because they're making a lot of money up there to cover his salary.
For that.
So, right, so it helps pay for that. We only do what the board wants to do.
I understand that.
So.
Alright, so we're technically still in public comment.
But last year, I also increased my office hours and the other board members' hours.
But that was a choice for the reasons that I stated. I mean, if you people wanted me to, I would gladly do that as well, because I'm here anyway. So.
I just, I mean, looking at these salaries, you guys have other jobs, right?
I, I have two pensions, yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure everybody's doing okay.
Right, because they're, they're not like super high jobs for all, so, for all the other duties that all of us have, for all the board meetings, for our township requires us to attend, be on a committee, so then I'm on two of them. So I also vote at those meetings every month. And, you know, today, the three of us who are at an election commission meeting, that all three of us are required to be at every election as well. So there's a lot more little things that goes into the pay too that I want to mention for everybody.
I'm sure there is. Trust me, I don't want any of your jobs.
I, I've had, I've had our county meetings that I've gone to, I don't, they're trainings. I don't take education or training pay for those, because that's part of my statutory duty for the, the election education at, at the county. So, yeah.
That was my recommendation prior to this, before, at some meeting, it's like a, a list. I mean, all we can see, the general public goes to the website, we see, here's your hours. That's it. We don't, if they don't come to these meetings, they don't know that you spent the day of another training, or you went here, or you're home. Nobody can see that unless they come here and listen. So I would like something like on the website, which we're currently working on, like, and about us, here's what your treasurer does for you, and a list of all the extra things. Because, I mean, I agree with her, these jobs and him, like, it's not a full-time gig to, you know, you raise a family on this job. But it is still a decent amount of money. If you look at it, like, you only make, you're only here ten hours a week, and you're making twenty-seven grand a year, like, that's a pretty good per diem.
It's like sixteen hundred dollars an hour. Yeah, like, you know, like treasurer and clerk now have-
Hopefully some.
A computer in work. Four hours at home yesterday on my laptop.
And I'm not asking for like a doc by the doctor.
Right.
Like, more generals, what does the treasurer do? I mean, the statutory duties last week over the Michigan website, and it, it's pathetic. I mean-
That's like a digital.
Six things, yeah? So it would be nice to see the board have a list of like, even throughout the year, just keep a notebook of, I did this, and this, this, this. You don't need necessarily hours, but put it up for the residents to realize what value, because it is a lot.
Have to go twice a month to measure how far the chicken crap pile is waiting for the guy's brother, stuff like that.
You know what I mean? Just hand it to Paul, take it out quickly for us.
Oh, really?
But at some point, you should just-
Yes, I do have to, because I think that guy's gonna snap and come up in here if I don't take heroin.
Well, that's what, that's what we, uh, went on the election floor was to be concerned.
So, I honestly think that it could be beneficial to all of us here on the board if we did an in-depth study, right? Because there are townships that have equal in number, equal, equal number of office hours making thirty-six thousand dollars a year, for example. And so, again, people would need to be able to understand that and why. But I would honestly, personally, like to see us not do anything to pay this meeting and to do a study. And then, because we can adjust this at any time.
No.
Yes. We did a resolution midterm for Paul one year, and we raised this, yes, we did. And look back in the history, he's probably got the dates because he's done more study, but I looked it up.
I didn't look, look at that deep, but since we've approached the subject, I was gonna wait until you, you move back. As a point of order and as a procedural point of order, and being the newest one on the board and still learning things, I have become friends with some of the people of the Michigan Township Association. I've become familiar. They might not be friends with me.
Telephone friends.
Telephone friends. I was, was trying to put together some of the thirty days on the February ninth, which I think we're inside the window of thirty days for February ninth already.
No, February ninth is our deadline for the thirty days before our hearing.
Okay, that clarifies that.
I just wanted to have this meeting now because, well, he wants this tomorrow.
That, I think, is far more important, but as far as the thirty days, that does not apply to us. Uh, it doesn't apply to, uh, you know, federal law or charter townships. We don't have the electorate who vote on our salaries. We set them, we set it ourselves. It's only townships that have an electorate, vote on the township, the township salaries, that have to have it in thirty days prior to that period. As Teresa said, we can, we can, we don't have, and actually, part of, part of the law, we don't have to change salaries. We don't have to vote at all. We can do it before a budget is completed, after a budget is completed. We could do it every month if we wanted to. At a regular public meeting, not that that makes any sense, but there are no laws that require us to do it. So, and I'm not, as you know, I'm not a big fan of special meetings.
Right.
Thank you all for coming out for this on relatively short notice.
Well, and I think that this was good too, because I was thinking that even if we don't vote on this or anything like that, something, other stuff come up, and we were looking at the stuff, that this is a good topic to leave, eh?
Well, I, I, I think it's great that we're having the discussion, and I am with all of you that think we should do some more in-depth research. We're spending your money, my money too, their money too, but, you know, one of the, one of the toughest things I bring myself to do is spend other people's money. I can waste my money on my own. I'm pretty good at it too. This is your money, and I, I think the questions that were raised are legitimate concerns, legitimate questions. At, at the low end of the scale, if, if we're paying peanuts, you know, we're only gonna get retirees or people that have, you know, huge pensions that can afford, you know, these aren't living wages. The other hand, maybe we should double it. You know?
I would increase my hours.
Who, who in, who in the community, geez, I would love to work as, you know, pick the physician. You know, trustee isn't gonna get you over the hump, but the three physicians, you know, if we, if they were living wage physicians, you know, are there, you know, wish, you know, the, the double-edged sword for that, for the three of you, is, you're gonna have competition in the ballot box for the physician, because, well, geez, now that it's paying forty-five, fifty, or Benzonia's sixty, what?
Sixty-three dollars.
Sixty-three dollars.
We gotta put the hot stores then, though.
You know, so, and, you know, how, how do you compare Inland to some other township, size, tax base, you know, all the, you know, big, it's a mixed bag. You know, so, but it does deserve some research.
But like you're saying, if you do that and you increase the hours and the pay for the board members, then there's more to be done, they're doing more things, and therefore, then the property values go up. So when the property values go up-
Yeah, the property values don't go up, it's such a bad-
No, 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 it's a good thing. Like, so then all the roads are paved, uh, the trash is taken out, like, um, there's, there's no, there's no like piles of junk anymore, because now we have full-time members of the board that can actually deal with this on a regular basis.
Well, it, uh, great point, and, and we could be here until Friday talking about this. But a lot of it is, we're all residents of Inland, why did we move here? What do we want Inland to be?
It's awesome.
Let's, let's, let's double everybody's taxes, and then we can have nicely paid roads everywhere, we can rebuild this building and have sports facility.
Nobody's gonna be able to own a house.
You know, you know, what do we want, you know? And there are a lot of people that don't want their property value to go up, because they're on fixed income and, and these, okay, still have to pay my taxes, otherwise she gets all feisty.
No, she, she'll take the late payment.
I take late payments, I charge you.
That's right.
Just remember, if we're gonna, if we're gonna wait a month or two, you know, a month to do this, we, this budget has to be approved by the end of March.
Right.
And, and if we don't have this study completely done, how can, how can I budget my fire department that you guys wanna have by this certain date? How can I budget when I don't know what the salaries that I put for my people or for me or whatever? These guys said, I can't do my budget until this is done, so I know how much money's getting taken out for salaries for my budget.
This brings up another, another sore spot. I know with some of the people on board, our policies, our stated policies, which I don't agree with all of them, and they need to be changed, but until they're changed, they're our policies. You, you should, everybody that's involved in this should be way ahead of where you are from the standpoint of putting your budgets together.
I, you know, I'm all done. I just need the dollar amount that it's getting done for the firefighters and me and assistant chief and all that. Once I throw that in, then I can move other ones around, right? I'm ready, I just-
Don't you have your ideas of what you want for your people? I mean, so you have those numbers, so-
That's right.
Right, and you have your total budget numbers based off of the village's rate?
Correct.
But, I mean, we could approve-
We can't set your budget, because you have-
No, no, but we could approve his wage is correct, right, at the board meeting, at the next board meeting. So at least you could move, I mean, to me-
Right, I don't, I don't, as long as it's done, so I can give it to, so I can fill out the numbers, so he has it for you guys to have to vote by-
Right.
March third.
Right.
I, I was just bringing up the stats, remember, this all has to be done by that date.
Well, so, we, as far as I'm concerned, like, or my thinking goes, and I could be thinking wrong, I don't know, but we could do, proceed with the budget at the current pay, right? And then we can make budget adjustments once we have had time to do a complete in-depth study, right?
Absolutely.
Because even if, we have all the way till April before anybody's pay changes anyway, so we have all that time to study, and then we can make a budget adjustment. It's not that hard. We do it all the time. Or regu- fairly regularly.
Well, right, right. I prefer not to do it, because then that, and that tells me I'm a failure because I didn't budget enough money. I ain't doing-
It's a, it's not a sign of failure, it's just, if, if you can look at it, it's a sign of doing a thorough job in, before we just jump pace ga- raises, you know?
And I wasn't asking for anything, and I've never asked for anything. Every year, you guys always do whatever, because I usually have it completely done, and then you guys go and change my pay rate, and I have to go back and change it.
Right.
So, that's, I don't wanna do it. I already have it done. Here it is.
As long as we're still in public comment.
So that's why I believe.
Are, are, are there any people in the, I'm trying to call it peanut gallery, in the audience that, uh, would be willing to step up and be on a committee to do some of this review? On one hand. I, I guess, I guess one hand makes you the chair.
Rose Marie has volunteered.
I'll follow through.
No, I, I would suggest we have a committee put together to, and give them a, a pretty, pretty short timeline to move this along. Make it a proposal.
You have to make a motion. I've drafted them all up to you.
No.
We haven't made any motions, so technically, we could, right?
No, we're still in public comment.
Oh, we're in public comment, okay.
Kinda.
Kinda, okay, so once public comment's done, you can do that, I believe.
I would like each board member to generate a list of all the things that you-
They're basic.
Just not every single thing and how many minutes it takes. I hate that, but I just like-
I don't know.
Different trains that you're like, how many hours do, and every week.
With the statutory.
Well, see, that's the gray area, because we're not really required hours, but we're required to work as many hours as it takes us to get our job done. So like, there are weeks, I mean, I'll be honest with you, there are weeks that I do my eight hours in the office, and then, but usually always, I have additional four hours. If it's tax distribution time, where I have to take all the money I've gathered, and I have to pay it out to a whole bunch of other people, I have to do a bunch of calculations, make sure I'm paying them to crack them out, then I'm usually here that week, six hours extra above my office hours. At the end of February, when I give the final disbursement to everybody, where I have to make sure every dime matches, every penny matches with the county, I have to make sure it matches with Betsy Boss, I have to make sure it matches with the schools northwest of. I spend even probably, you know what I mean? So it's always various. So I know I have to work as much as the job requires that week to do. So never is it just my office hours.
Yeah, and that's like before every election.
And that's what I want on the list.
Four weeks. Just to turn- Four and a half, five weeks before the election, I, I may not be in the office for a while. I can take someone I work home and do it at home, because I've just spent thirty hours doing. Is there a reason for the base? But that, that's the way it is.
The reality of the situation, you guys' jobs-
Yes.
Are becoming more complicated.
I do think that's true, and people are demanding more.
And, yes, and with the township's following, it's becoming, I, I've dealt a lot with, with Benzonia Township because it's a fire station township, Paul, talking about with Jason, Martin Hart, excuse me. And he's there a lot, not just in the office, but outside the office, cleaning up chicken shit, whatever.
And that, that's when people don't always see it.
Those are the gray areas, the, I could, right, you can put up there, uh, uh, and, and, I mean, you can't capture everything, but certainly to understand that your hours here in the office are not the only hours that you're putting in. Right.
Right.
And I think that's, that's a valid, valid point.
Right, I work on salary, and I have a job description that I add to regularly. So if I wanna raise, I go to my boss and I say, this is what I was paid for originally. Now I'm at, you added all these extra things. That's why I need a raise. I think that's gonna get the public to know for when you guys go in for reelection and everything else, but, um, what, yeah, what?
And I think as we evolve, when we have someone who is new IT literate, more so than some of us on the board, I think all of us on the board, that as we evolve and that website evolves, and that's, and all this stuff that, that you guys are mentioning will be there.
One other suggestion.
Working with this website.
Yeah, one other suggestion is, as, you know, we talked about in the last board meeting, all the postings that you had to do. Is that really statutory? Um, is that really statutory or is that secretarial?
No, anything with the election is statutory, and I don't, I don't.
I'm just trying to say.
Well, it could be a higher a secretary to.
Exactly, might get to that point where you're spending your time that you should be doing your clerk duties, or treasurer duties, or whatever duties, where a secretary would be.
Right.
Better to do that.
Whereas my, it is my statutory duty to send out absent voter applications and to send out those postcards that is the clerks responsible, the state assigned it to the clerks, as well as ballots, so it is my job. I brought, I just started bringing, you know, letting the board know and, and ask, you know, just getting them to approve my postage and other things that I have to buy for the election in the past couple of years. I don't have to ask the board because it is mandated by the state that I do it, so whatever, if they told me, no, you can't have the postage, it's overruled by the state of Michigan anyway, so I put so that you guys, so that everybody knows, yeah, I'm spending two thousand dollars on postage this year, but after the election, I fill out my forms and this year the state will reimburse you that two thousand dollars in postage. So we're getting the money back, not until the end of the year, but we're getting it back.
So to his question, I have a question, so, um, if you have a lot of statutory duties that are required, just using this as an example, because we used to at one time also send out tax bills, now the county does that for us, and we pay them to do that.
Yeah.
Um, cause it is a lot of envelope stuffing and time, but to his note, if we get more and more residents here, you could deputize another person or two to help mail them out.
No, you can only have one deputy.
Is that a state requirement or is that our township?
That's the law.
Okay, cause I was under the impression that you could put other people, you could oversee other people helping you do that.
Okay, what it is is, it's not two deputies, but one is deputy clerk and one is, um, she's, it, that person would be a deputy, but they only deal with election stuff, and so I could have two deputies in theory, but they're name different.
Okay, so nonetheless, if we paid one of those people ten, fifteen dollars an hour like we paid a, an election worker or another person, would that be a better use of our money to pay that person to help to cut down your hours versus giving you a giant raise to stuff envelopes? Do you know what I'm saying?
I do, there's a lot, there's a lot of this.
Right.
For any of our positions.
Right, there's.
There's a lot, so, you know, talking it out, hearing people's ideas, it, it gets, I, I guess it gets all of us generated with other.
Well, I think some of the confusion too is, the MTA told you, you had to fill these out?
MTA said that, yes, you fill out.
That's not even close to what I put down in my request, so.
I, I.
My big pay raise that everyone keeps talking about, I asked for.
I rounded it.
Three point two percent.
Yeah.
It's like sixty-one dollars.
It is.
I almost looked at like, for the sixty bucks, if I don't have to log my time, I can just keep doing my job, yeah, I'll just waive it.
Well, I, I only did that so that it all ended up being divided by twelve, it was an even number, it worked out perfect.
No, I understand, I just.
This is something we discussed and it was just there.
My last note on that.
Cause nobody contacted me to tell me.
I've been on the phone all day with people calling me and asking me questions about this meeting and people contacting me because we give, every time we call these special meetings for things like this and put out salaries, we're giving the appearance that we're sneaking something by the public.
Yeah.
We don't, and if we didn't do that, we wouldn't bring all of this in here, so I think that whatever it takes to not do this again, or to do this absolutely, and in, only in an extreme emergency, we stop doing this and we do this stuff at regular board meetings.
I think that.
My issue was, I messed up the dates, and I'll double check it later, I'm not saying I don't believe MTA told you that, but I don't see anywhere in there where that MCL doesn't apply to all elected officials, but, it, I mean. From what Cindy told me, um, you're talking about our township's lawyer? Or.
They always recommend we talk.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to an actual lawyer, will give me guaranteed legal advice as opposed to. Cause, cause the MTA does not give legal advice. Right, and, I mean, me and Teresa have called MTA on the same thing, got completely different answers.
That is true, that has happened.
So, I just worry about violating the law, but. I'm, I'm understood. But, yeah, I mean, if you're saying it doesn't apply, maybe it doesn't, I just, when you read, read it, it doesn't say general or. Well, it, it discusses the, when there's a annual public meeting of the electorate, and in those townships, being electorate, and not just the residents, you have to be registered, or, um, they're the ones that, you know, basically pull the lever on passing or not passing, it's a salary change, not the board. Okay. And that's, that's the big difference, and, I mean, to Teresa's point, in the past, we've had salary changes mid-year, and you can't do that in a township that has an electorate, and a annual meeting where salaries are set, they're set on each year. If you don't wanna change it, you don't have to, but if you wanna change it, the other thing is, you also, for those of you that sit forward reading all this stuff, you can't decrease somebody's salary midterm, uh, you can change, change it for somebody that's coming in, but that's why it always keeps going up.
So, what, while we're still in public comment.
Yeah. So.
So, first comment.
I guess the last thing would be just, you know, how did you each come up with your own raise, how was it calculated or reasoning?
I think I don't do it, so that was definitely for me.
That was, what, what?
I, I asked for that.
I know, they did ask me to vote out, but I didn't, because I didn't.
Yeah, that's what I did, that's, that's all I did last year was the inflation rate that self-security goes to.
Inflation.
My inflation rate was insane.
Right, so it looked big, but that's.
So what is the, the clerk inflation rate there, higher than, you know?
Well, last year we also ended in the hours for the clerk, I don't know.
The hours for.
What, what is it called, I might count the way.
That's what it says right there.
Yeah.
And, and, and this was just for board discussion, it wasn't meant that I command this.
Well, how, how did we come up with twelve and a half percent where the others are at five or something, three, one, two?
I just did it, and then I thought, well, that won't work, cause originally what I thought was, okay, if, and I, and I mentioned this to supervisor Teresa, is, I was gonna ask for a pay raise like this and then not, and be held to this, not have a pay raise for the next two years, but, but, until, until, I did, I thought it was a, I might, I won't be here next year to do that and the incoming clerk would not, couldn't be helped the same.
Right.
As I, but.
So do you believe that's a little bit higher than what it should be?
Yes, let's, we'll discuss that, yeah, I have it, I have my.
I, I understand inflation and possibility and everything else, it is.
That, that wasn't what this year was for, yeah.
Yeah.
And I just say, uh, the record that, I mean, I'm only asking these questions, I don't think these numbers are astronomical by any stretch of the imagination, um, like someone said, I couldn't afford to quit my job and work this, and I couldn't work, do this and have a regular job, um, and so, but I also come to all these meetings and I know what goes on and all the stuff that you guys have to do, so I see it as like, okay, that's good, move on, you know, but I've also been to several of these budget meetings and watching you guys try to decide your own salaries is so awkward and uncomfortable and.
It is.
I'm not saying that you guys don't deserve every single penny, but we're just like, I'm trying to, you know, understand and follow along.
The reasoning of it all.
Yeah.
All right, are we good on public comment? All right. Close public comment at sixty-five. All right.
Can we adjourn now?
I, I would suggest that in light of our conversation, that we do, what did you wanna create, what committee?
Well, my first suggestion is that we continue to discuss, cause I think the discussion here this evening is great, um, but not vote on anything.
Right, not vote on anything, but move forward if we want to.
But I, I would float a motion that we create a, lack of a better name, come up with a better name, Salary Review Committee that, uh, is independent of the, the board, none of us sit on it, that hustles and gets a investigation of all Benzy townships.
Which I actually have that on my.
You could do other, I, I feel you, we could do other, um, northern Michigan areas because.
Like, like-sized.
Like-sized, like, numbers, you know, comparable numbers, population.
Parcels, like, um, all right, um, without weights.
Without having the board members, though?
Yeah, there's a lot of them on the other side, you know, like, yeah, the, uh, comparable to a health, it talks leading towards the, yeah, more money like this, yeah, it does. But there's a lot of little ones that suck that way too, that would be comparable to us.
That'd be another question to ask the chairman. Yeah, well, I mean, I think that would be more a policy thing, which in March, we're gonna have a whole day special meeting to discuss that. Do we have to, do we have to have a board member on any committee?
Oh, I thought we did, I returned the request, it was set, I didn't think about that, can we have a silent member on?
Yeah, well, like, the land committee, I'm just there, there, there's five voting members, I'm just.
I'll be just there.
You can't be chairs or anything.
Can't be chairs, it'd be a non-voting member.
All right, I'll see if little and I can. I, I would.
But I think the issue is, we need to find five non-board members first, and then we can put the committee together, or. But it is something.
Can we do three or?
Four non-board members and then a fifth, it would be a board member, if it's a vote, if it's from the board.
Yeah, if it's a non-voting.
You don't want to vote, well, would they tie? They, what do they get a vote on?
Sometimes a tie is good.
They actually.
What they're, right, but they, whatever.
Because then you have, forced to have more discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, if they're just gonna write a pinup to recommend and then print it to us to vote, so they're not really gonna vote.
So we could maybe appoint a couple people tonight and have them, see if they can find a couple other people?
Well, we've got.
And do it at the board meeting.
We've got a regular board meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, and it's not that they can't start, but if I authorize whoever is willing to step forward tonight, you know, are you saying you'd be on that?
I, I would do that.
So we've got.
Okay, let, let's make the motion.
I, I need that we create a salary committee, and most of them have got a better name for it. I don't worry about the names, cause I. To review board and, uh.
Township.
Township salary.
Wages.
Our wages, uh, in time to report back. Why, you don't wanna put that in there? No, let, let them do a thorough enough job and then, like, like you said, if it doesn't have to be the thirty days before the budget hearing, it doesn't really matter to me, I thought it had to be before the thirty days before the budget meeting.
So, we should maybe vote to just keep salaries as our.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we're, we're in a motion here.
Yeah.
So create salary committee to review board and township wages.
And salaries. And wages.
Wages and salaries, that's right.
And report back to the board and public.
This is the motion for salary committee, I guess what we'll call it, like you said.
Do we have to include the names, does it point to?
No, we need to hold on having the committee first.
And we can second it.
I'll second it, there you go, now we can discuss, so if necessary, now that we have a second. All right, oh, um, Teresa seconded, right, should we discuss before we vote?
Let's see, so with this committee idea in place, to cover your butt, in case we have to in fact have a resolution, can't we just vote to keep salaries as our? I know it's a little off topic, cause it's in.
We need to vote to keep.
Oh, we don't need to, okay.
Just, just let them ride.
All right, so, yeah, okay.
Well, we have to, you don't have to re-sign these?
No.
Um, okay.
If there's no resolution made, it doesn't need to be signed.
Okay, I thought it had to be yearly.
No.
No.
Okay, we have to.
And then we can fix these tables, or they come the next time. I usually. Call vote, oh, it's all in favor there, so you see that.
Give me a second.
There is a second.
All right, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, so that knocks two agenda items off.
I thought, I thought that we kept something here, which is how it.
Oh, I, trust me, just, you, um, just, and I apologize for not having this previously, if anyone has questions about these things, I'm, I'm a monkey to the creative, I'm give me a call, send me an email, happy to answer the question.
Thank you for giving her.
No, I didn't mean to go on, so. Good little numbers.
Did you say that we need to make a little, the members?
Yeah, so, Dave is the moderator of the meeting.
All right, so, Rosemarie, you were volunteering or not?
Yes.
Okay, and then Jim Clark, anybody else?
Teresa.
You can pick your own chair.
Jim volunteered to be chair.
You put a man up first, stuck at the Evan earlier, so.
So there's, there's two people on there plus Teresa?
Yeah, so far.
Okay, so we'll let.
Yeah, Evan Morzeki.
Evan Morzeki.
Well, volunteer, are you following?
Somebody's volunteered.
I'll text him and I'll leave it on there.
They want me to be on that stupid, uh, head, you know, over, so.
I want the board to volunteer.
Okay.
Evan's not a good choice.
So we have Rosemarie, Jim, Teresa, Evan.
Laura, do you mind? I'm on too many things.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think you volunteered. What if we didn't make you come to all the meetings?
In, in February, I'm gonna ask for a zoom account for the township, so that a lot of these type of meetings can be done that way.
Yep. Okay, so.
We'll find, we'll find your fifth.
I, I make the motion that we.
Yeah, just cause like.
Approve to be on the salary committee.
Yes.
Rosemarie, Sword Out, Jim Clark, Teresa, and.
All right, I'll do it.
Evan Morzeki and.
No, Evan's.
It's like, take Evan's name off and put Laura's name on.
Evan doesn't know we've been on.
So, Rosemarie, Jim, Teresa, Laura.
Yeah. Find somebody else loitering outside.
Well, he's.
So that was.
Teresa's a non-voter.
That, oh, yeah.
So you only need three.
So, that, that's, that's the motion for those four individuals to be on the committee.
We'll do that, I won't vote.
I'll second it.
Thanks.
We're not, we're not really voting, it's just putting together.
Right.
Right, rational investigation.
But for us to do that, I also would like then, like you said, Laura, a list of what your jobs are and approximately how much time.
We can't.
Approximately.
Put.
Well, it takes you, what, an hour to type up minutes, I don't know, you know, or.
For, for now, we just kinda bill our own time cards out.
Generalize. Yeah, just generalize.
Right, so, you know, like, there, there's a lot, and I'm sure these, these guys have the same thing, but I'm gonna use you, okay, for an example. So he came to me tonight, which I often get in my hours in the office, to explain the P R E and get him a form to fill that out, because you would not believe with the number of people in our township who come in questioning their taxes, that's the first thing I look at, and then I spend twenty minutes explaining that process to them, having them fill out the form, scanning it in, sending it to our assessor to get it approved, so like, there's all these little customer service type things that we do, that aren't techni, like, that's not my statutory duty, but I feel it's my obligation and my duty as a treasurer to help people lower their tax bill, you know, so like, how do you account for that stuff?
Just customer service, ten hours, you know?
Anywhere from a minute to an hour and a half on the phone.
Right, yeah.
It's, it's my job too.
Right, like, it's just, and then that's.
Who's on the other end?
Yeah.
Right, and depends who comes in your office too, some people, like I was. Right, and depends who comes in your office too. Some people, like I was telling somebody the other day, they come in and they have nobody to talk to. They come in and they wanna sit down and chat with me for forty minutes, and I do it because I, I feel they need someone to talk to. You know, like, but then I pay for it, 'cause I come and spend forty extra minutes on another night to make up that time.
I'm going to include in the notes, in the, in the minutes, that number one and number two will be brought back to the board by the newly formed salary committee at. At the next board meeting, you want it in February?
We can, I'll let you do that.
When they.
When they have.
When they have.
Results.
Formed salary committee, but at least by March meeting. By March meeting. Okay, so that, that's in the notes of why we are doing this.
All right, uh, so all in favor of placing those people on the board? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, and then Rose? All right, so the town, or the county is doing Halbert Road and an overlay on Lamb. And then they're doing chip and seal on Reynolds.
Reynolds, Lake Anne, or the, along the Lake Anne area here.
Say those again, yeah, Halbert, and did you say Lamb? You said Halbert.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, Reynolds and Lake Anne are getting chip sealed. Hewens, sorry, I'm over, Hewens and, uh, Lamb Road are getting, uh, redid. So on those, working off of that, I met with, uh, John Ross, John Ross yesterday, and, uh, we are gonna get reimbursed to finish out that section of Hewens Road.
Now, how is he going from.
How, how, did he just give that approval, John, or?
He.
Or there's a way to do that?
It, it's, he sold his soul on another bill, so he has funding coming to his, uh, area for roads in the next.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the people on that stretch that didn't want it paved, now they're gonna have it paved?
Yes, because in twenty.
Happy?
It's not gonna make the people that paid the, nobody actually paid the dollars, now they're gonna pay for it paved.
My understanding, nobody actually paid, right?
Yes, they didn't.
How they paid. They didn't pay through tax?
No, no, it came, they wrote the check to the township, we input it into the trust and agency account and wrote a check to the county, 'cause it has to pass through.
So it wasn't done through a special assessment to the taxes?
No.
Uh, 'cause I looked that up to see if that was the case, there was none, so I didn't know they did that.
But twenty twenty-five, it's gonna be part of the detour for thirty-one, so. It needs to be taken care of, or it's gonna end up a mud pit.
So are we gonna re, required to pay those people back any money, or we're just, they, that's the benefits they've already enjoyed?
That was the agreement.
That's gonna be turned into Class A road, right? That part of Hewens is gonna be Class A road, if they're gonna, that's gonna be part of the detour.
It's gonna be a detour.
Yeah, for cross. Uh, it would have to be if it's part of the detour. It would have to be if it's part of the detour, so I'd have to look into where the detour's going. First I heard, they're going down Hewens, I thought they were going the other way down Bend and, and, uh, that's River Road, but I took your own.
The last time they did. They paid Hewens, 'cause it did used to be paved, right? Right, last time, that's not was paid.
That came by pass.
It didn't pay the half, okay. So, good on that.
Yep, and then they are.
Are, are we guaranteed reimbursed by this stage? Okay.
And then, uh, Mohawk Trace and Algonquin, they're just shorter roads that are right off of Hewens. Uh, they are already paved, but it kind of, they've, they've got paved flat. So there's no water runoff, they're falling apart, cracking. So while we have the paper company out there, we're gonna get it done a lot cheaper if we have them, uh, fixed now.
Those aren't private, or?
I was gonna say, that's not.
They're not private. Road commission did tell they paved that, or they saw that road?
Yes. We maintain those.
Is it a dead end?
Yeah, it's still called, say, I won't.
Yeah, it goes down, turns around, comes back out. I thought that. But they, 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 uh, Gray, Gray Lane off of Lamb Road.
Virginia Circle.
Virginia Circle, yeah. That was supposed to be a T V D, which the county was never supposed to plow that road, because it was a private, or, you know, and they were supposed to have all these things in place, but there's three subdivisions in our township that the counties had to plow, because the businesses that built those three subdivisions went out of business. This is what, what I learned from Paul before he left, and so the county was plowing subdivisions that were supposed to be. Yeah.
Private, they are certified by the road commission, though.
Yeah.
M T F funds that, for those two.
The, the, yeah.
All right, and the, uh, Marl and Burt Mill are, uh, I just wanna put hundred-foot skirts off of them, so that the people are stopped at the stop sign, pull out, it just doesn't dig that big hole that you get from a dirt road transition.
Is Marl really used?
It's really not, but.
Much, does it, 'cause I know we've discussed this before, I don't know if Mary remembers, but.
There's some new houses down there.
We were talking, we didn't want Marl. Traffic, but.
I think it.
For that.
There are houses down there now.
For that, that cost.
Is this this cost, our cost, or shit, or capital?
That's total.
Okay.
So there's.
Sixty-five hundred.
Just for a hundred foot.
So Halbert is skipped over.
Yes.
Hewens to the Colbert?
Yep, so this one I wanted to discuss. We could either do Hewens to the Colbert they put in for that price, or for seventeen thousand, they will build up coming off of Hewens, 'cause it's all trash down there, it needs to be rebuilt up, and then just do the hundred-foot pavement there.
Hewens is what?
Hewens.
Halbert, Colbert.
Uh, so just a quick question before we discuss that option. Wasn't there talk last year of building Colbert up to starting that process for when it was gonna get paved with more gravel being put there?
So the road commission is gonna eat that cost to bring in the fill there, to bring up the intersections to be even with Hewens Road, so you're not sitting at such an incline.
Not in the whole road, they, we're talking at one time, bringing in extra gravel so that it would start building up the road?
We need about four feet of fill to actually bring that road up to equal Hewens Road, so we're basically talking about the hundred-foot. If you wanted to make the whole road equal with Hewens, you have to go back about fifteen hundred feet, and that's gonna be a substantial cost.
No, they, you know, they said at one time that there's gravel that they normally put underneath the pavement, right? Like, and we were gonna start prepping the entire Halbert Road for that process to be done.
That was discussed. Yeah, it was discussed.
And it was supposed to be on the plans for this year, I thought, or last year.
Twenty-five.
Was that our plans, or was that your guys' plan?
That was something that Paul had thought of, and I had met him out here, out there on the job, uh, whenever that was last year, so, uh, when he was still supervisor, but we had talked about it, and it would basically have to go all the way back to the top of the hill in order, in order to make it flat, and he kind of went against it, said that it'd be too much work. So what we came up with now is doing a hundred-foot approach, basically bringing everything up to Hewens Road level, so you're not sitting at such an incline or an angle, and then we taper it back from there, uh, going towards the top of the hill.
Is there a possibility that that whole road could be paved at some point?
It's a possibility.
Because of the, the dip.
Right, the dip on the back, this sets Hewens to the Colbert, that's actually Hewens to the top of the hill. Um, I corrected that, but, uh, nevertheless, if you go down that hill on the backside, it needs to be engineered, basically. We gotta line it out, we ate it twenty-two feet wide, if you're there, right now it's about twelve, fifteen feet at most. So we have to engineer it going down the hill with spillways and everything else, and there'd also have to be probably a hill cut, 'cause it's a fifty-five mile an hour road at the sits, but if we start paving it, people hit that at fifty-five, it's gonna be an issue, so.
So it's probably not so hard for this year.
And then Paul is for you, it's gonna have to be a lot, or it's gotta be widened and everything.
And then that runs over the creek, right?
It does.
That Colbert has to be wide.
We were talking about the Colbert.
Well, the Colbert has actually caused erosion issues, so we're, it, there's huge washout into the creek from the Colbert.
So we'd have to probably bring the road up in the middle, over the Colbert, put extensions on the Colbert, as well as engineer the hill, probably cut both sides down, widen the banks out, it's, it's gonna be a huge undertaking, it's not gonna be something that's simple, it's just overlaying it, but.
So it's probably never getting done?
I'm not sure, I think that.
No, I, and I'm, I'm fine with that, honestly, I'm fine with that, as it is, opening it up all the way through has caused when it's not a gravel and has a, the quality of the road. When it's closed to a dead end, and they did to pave over the Colbert, our roads were always smooth. I don't know if you lived there then, but it used to be a dead end at the creek. Yeah, and it was much nicer.
You couldn't get in the road.
You were talking about Hewens Road, and how they paved, or somebody answered about that, never, you were the phone call, somebody mad that the road got paved.
Oh, this was the, the dirt portion between Reynolds and Lake Anne, I don't know if you were, I don't think at that time. Oh, yeah, just ask the phone book.
Yeah. Nobody wanted to pay it, right?
No, well.
Some did and some didn't, and the ones that didn't.
Mad because they took the trees down.
Yeah, there's.
That the road commission was taking anyways to widen it.
Yeah.
An issue, all right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're already so near.
I love driving through with the trees.
So the Hewens to the top of the hill, is that before it goes down to the Colbert? And that's only a hu, that's not a hundred feet, how?
That's a hundred seventy, no, that's not.
Yeah, I don't think that we should do that for.
He put, he gave two options there, Laura? Colbert to the top of the hill, or Colbert to the.
Oh, a hundred-foot acre.
Gotcha.
Um, I have a question, this, um, so from the complaints that I've heard the most in this room in the past and from other members of the community, like St. John's Road seems to be a big topic of needing road work, is it not? Do you not hear that?
Uh, not, not from last year, between Reynolds and Bendon Road, we put, uh, four, five inches of gravel up the top of that and recreated everything out, and put extensions on the Colberts that were kind of down in the hole there.
And that solved their problems?
For the most part, I haven't heard, hadn't heard anything negative about it. Um, we hear going down the hill to the east of Bendon Road, kind of these washout or hammer rains.
Right through Lamerson Lane.
Right, we've talked about paving down the hill, uh, Paul and I have talked about paving down that hill, but it never brought to fruition, so I. I mean, it's something that could be done, but it'd have to be basically engineered going down that hill again.
With what you just said, just out of personal curiosity, sorry, uh, where you improved that road and you added more gravel to it and you graded it to make it smoother, can that be done on like any dirt road?
It can be.
So is that a possibility, doing that on our road? On our end, because like our road, who did you guys grade it, a day later, it is nothing but solid.
On thirty-one, yeah.
On thirty-one, from thirty-one to the creek. Yeah, both ends are, I said this.
Yeah, it's something that you wanted to be in a row.
We did that last year, didn't we?
That's what I'm saying there, was talk about it, it was never done, to my knowledge, and the road, just every year gets worse and worse, and more gravel.
Well.
As, as a concerned citizen.
So they never did.
On Halbert, I would like to see that, that paved portion, but certainly would like to see the gravel, if, if something.
From thirty-one to?
All the way, well.
Oh, we can't do this, this thing, but you can do Hewens to thirty-one.
Thirty-one to the drop off and Hewens to the drop off, and that drop off is, is a challenge. But both ends get torn pretty bad.
So yeah, typically, any requests like that go to the board, and the board comes to me and asks me for an estimate, and I get it back to them, and it goes from there, so. That's something that's a one, that's not something I can do.
Yeah, we'll look at that, 'cause.
Well, with Lamb Road being in poor shape and with opening that full way, we have become a throw-up pass for many people on Hewens and for many people off of Burt Mill to thirty-one.
Well, Lamb Road is gonna be paved this year.
Thank God, because that should help.
Hewens Road and Lamb Road are both being over this year.
It'll cause a problem, well, that's, duh, but, yeah, and it should help.
Hewens from six sixty-nine to Reynolds. That was part of the millage, local millage, that everyone voted on this year, and that's what we're doing.
Where's that?
This year?
This year. Well, forbid, see, I, the private, or the meeting here today is kind of my fault. Uh, basically, I wanna get our bid backed out before the rest of the counties in Michigan do, to try to get the best price. Typically, we go first, 'cause we get the best price. Uh, if we wait, then basically the competitors see each other's numbers and then start trying to get closer to each other. So if we go first, we usually get that good spread, we usually get a lower price, which is also a reason inland is trying to do a lot of paving this year, 'cause Hewens and Lamb Road, those are big ton projects, they're five, or I think Hewens is about five, six thousand tons. Lamb Road is quite a bit as well.
And we didn't do any paving last year.
Yeah, 'cause everything was done in coal bags last year, so. Right, so if I'm coming over here, you're gonna get the best, uh, bank or bug doing any type of paving you have in that area now.
We did all the research. I asked for a quote on St. John's, but over off of Hewens is.
Right, that makes sense. I, I was just curious if that was still high on the priorities, 'cause I'm not thinking underlist, and that is, when people talk about roads, we know that.
It's, St. John's is on the paving secondary, you get a number there.
Reynolds to Betsy River.
It was kind of just a larger number through it, 'cause I know that hill's gotta be engineered as well, and we gotta get one.
Oh, there it is, down there.
Three twenty.
Okay.
So if you want a tighter number.
All right, and then.
Marl, Burt Mill. Third priority.
All right, so what I would like to ask for is Reynolds to Lake Anne on Hewens, Mohawk Trace, Algonquin, Marl, Burt Mill, and Colbert, all just a hundred feet, and then, uh, four thousand for gravel on, uh, Lost Lake. It's just a small section of the road, uh, right where Miller's at, to, uh, there, there's a neighborhood back there, which is, that's all private, but to get back there, there, I mean, it's pretty much a two-track.
Okay, yeah.
That there's a little.
By, um.
It's south of.
It's called Ecoran Hills, or it's Ecoran Road, or whatever, Lost Lake and Ecoran.
Ecoran Ridge.
Five houses, but there's like twenty blocks. Yeah, but that dirt portion of our road on, uh, Lost Lake is pretty rough, so. Those are the ones that I would like to ask for.
So.
Uh, I'm open to discussing.
What does this?
Hewens for.
Total dollar, it doesn't, it doesn't just cover your priority paving?
It covers, yeah, it covers the green and the red, so the gravel on Lost Lake, a hundred feet on Murrell, at Burt Mill, and then Algonquin, Mohawk Trace, and then finishing up Hewens is the four oh three, which is what we'd have to, uh, have up front.
And then Japan.
And then we'll get, uh, two thirty-seven, four eighty-four, sixty back from the state, which will leave us at one seventy out of pocket, plus whatever we spent on Colbert, whether it's the seventeen or the one twenty-seven.
So that's gonna come out of not the township road tax, that's gonna come out of the actual township?
Come out of township, millage, road millage.
That's what I meant.
The road millage, and then some of it will be out of the general fund, I'll transfer into roads, and then we'll go back into general fund uh, once we get reimbursed from the state.
Cause some of the.
I, I didn't look, and I'm sorry, I should've done that. What, what do we have currently in the, um, in the road millage fund?
Yeah, I know with the amount for the, the budget of adding in what we get this year, it's at like three twenty. Plus we have, what is it, forty, forty-six matching funds?
I'd have to look, yeah.
So actually, one seventy will be our pocket, because if this four oh three is, is totals, and, never mind. Never mind. The yellow's hard to shoot.
Yeah, but none of the yellow I'm asking for.
Uh, is the four oh three?
Right.
Okay, so then four oh three is the total cost, road commission's share and ours, so we don't actually pay only what? Let's just say two oh two, just to make it even, we pay two hundred and two thousand.
No, they don't have any matching funds. No, we pay one, one seventy.
They don't do, we usually.
We have a certain amount of matching funds that's allocated to each township.
Right.
And then when they do our other, okay, so this. And then when they do our other, okay, so this is coming out of our millage fund, and the regular road paving that you would do comes out of our regular road fund, it's the general fund.
Right.
Cause if we pay.
But we're gonna put more in there and cover the money from the state till we get it.
Okay.
Also, uh, the bridge on Hewens, uh, they gotta drill into that and check the quality, but we need to basically leave some matching funds for that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, yours.
Not, not real Hewens, the other Hewens.
The other Hewens across. So, we're gonna have to work on the bridge. And that's not in the budget, no, we don't know what that costs.
So it's about half a mil for the bridge, and one point around that.
Notice the time.
And we're gonna pay that?
No, they.
Three thousand.
There, there's a rehab land.
A lot.
Yeah, it's a rehab land.
At one point, we'd have to flip the whole bill.
Yeah, no, it's, before you said the estimate for again, it's good, it could be like fifty thousand, if it's bad, it could be three hundred.
It could vary, we gotta get in there, I've been talking with Brad, like our, um, bridge engineer, and he wants us to dig down behind the abutments to see, um, what's going on with them, cause if you go in the water, you can actually poke through the sheet piling with your stick, with your finger. Yeah, something is very gross in there typically, uh, trying not to get too into it, but when they drive sheet piling for the abutments, it's two sections, about six inches apart, and sometimes they'll back those with concrete, or they'll back them, which is their, we're assuming it's just there at this point, since it's starting to corrode on one side. But depending on what it is, once we get down there and uncover all of that, we'll have our engineer come out while we're doing it. Um, it could be anywhere from fifty thousand for kind of a easier repair, or it could potentially go up to three hundred fifty, four hundred thousand if it's excessive.
Are you gonna reduce the guardrails?
We're not reducing anything on that, no. A new superstructure replacement for there, they will not let us get away with the twenty-two, twenty-four foot span that is there now, cause you can see the creek comes in, bottom back and bottom. So we'd be about forty foot, which is basically two, uh, timber structures, it's gonna be somewhere around two, two and a half million dollars, or somewhere in that.
The thing that kills me is the reason they put the guardrail up is the snowball hit one of the sides, except they put it up on the side that wasn't hit.
How many people live across this bridge?
One, two, three, four, five.
Oh, a lot.
Six.
Close the bridge and make a move.
Six of you, and how many houses?
Three.
Three, no, four.
Four?
Four houses, four, four houses.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we did breaches, one of the houses was up there.
Keep going all the way to Hewens.
You can go all the way.
All the way down, or?
Out of, out of, out of here.
I haven't, I haven't done it.
It's pretty, it's pretty two tracks.
Well, I'm excited.
Yeah.
Much better to stay land than just two tracks.
We don't want to consider, don't know.
I don't think so.
Uh, can, can we put it across to Holbert to, to.
Yeah, for gravel.
For gravel, cause we are in the area, and you'll be there with gravel trucks, so, because it is.
We have to do something for this here.
I've gone through Tyros and crazy, I might be.
No, it's close to that thirty times, so you're good. We're gonna get in, do it. Size real fast.
No, we need emotions.
Cause we're spending money.
Yeah.
What, what are we doing on Holbert?
We are doing the red, and we're doing just the top part.
Yeah, but that says, plus Holbert, are we doing? Oh, I'm asking for a hundred, but. So we're, we're talking one eighty-seven.
Oh, you just talked, I thought we were doing top of the hill.
No.
No.
Up on, so now you need to refi those numbers, cause.
No, one, one eighty.
It's purple.
Yeah.
You said red and green.
Red and greens are here, so.
Plus the seventeen, plus Holbert is, is the one on the bottom.
Yep, so plus seventeen on the top of the box, so one eighty-seven total, one eighty-seven total.
We're not doing this one?
And.
We're gonna add on four twenty. Hewens and gravel inquiry on Holbert.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get with the tomorrow.
But we have to reuse.
No, not to get, not to get, uh.
Alright, so.
Cool, alright, so I don't know, someone wants to make a motion for all of them, or do one by one?
I, I'll read them. Can I make a motion that we approve the Hewens Road, the Mohawk Trace, the Elgonquin, the Marl, the Burt Mill, the Holbert Road a hundred foot, the Lost Lake, Miller Road to Acorn Bridge, and the bridge on Hewens?
Well, that's, we don't have a price. Are we doing Lost Lake?
So, do we got a total?
We're doing eighty-seven.
It's one ninety-three.
And we're doing Lost, and we're doing Lost Lake.
One ninety-seven?
Yeah, you said that.
One eighty-seven.
No, it's, it's one ninety-three, cause I didn't have, uh, Lost Lake in there. Right, but I, I already had it in the four oh four, or the four oh three. Oh, I'm sorry, so, yeah, it's already one eighty-seven.
Her motion is Hewens, Mohawk, Elgonquin, Marl, Burt Mill.
Hundred foot.
Hundred foot, Holbert hundred foot, and Lost Lake, great, for.
One eighty-seven.
One eighty-seven.
Should we get a coupon once we're there?
Act, one eighty-seven after.
It's been rehired.
After reimbursement. Outside. Now we can discuss it.
Yeah, I'll discuss it.
If I, if my notes here are right, you said we have three hundred and twenty in the current, or we will after this tax period, in the road thing, so we're gonna have a surplus of money.
That's okay, yeah, I hope so.
Might have to go towards the.
Maybe we can fix that.
Towards the bridge.
Yeah, between the bridge and, uh, dirt for Hewens, or gravel for Hewens, and stuff like that.
Well, a few more things.
What are you saying?
No, I, I'm, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we can do more for people.
Oh, yeah, no, we can, I just, this was, a lot of this was just rushed, because we want to get it in with the same quote as Hewens and Lamb.
Right, so.
Well, I, I think for, for doing more, you know, the paving secondary, either Burt Mill or Saint John's, one fifteen and three twenty for Saint John's, you're, you're now, you know, really stretching it, especially.
Well, the three twenties definitely stretching it, but the one fifteen is.
You got one thirty, you have only one thirty-three left, but you don't know what. Someone's raising the cost, and that's gonna be your problem, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Probably.
No, I have this part, so.
Plus, I mean, like this part, if something gets washed out, or, I mean.
So these are estimates, you can definitely, yeah.
Right, these are the estimates, and so I guess, I'll do the package, I'll get actual numbers back, and then I will rework and put all the correct numbers back in, so you guys know exactly what you're studying.
Okay, there is a likelihood that costs could be.
Right, yeah.
Cause they get a great coupon as, or off.
I try to go a little high on everything.
Right.
Um, just to kinda cover us, that way if they come down, it looks good, but obviously, we don't want them to know it, but we have no idea what Elmer's in remerging this year, they can't bet against each other. They're the only two competitors, which is Mulan and Reeve, or Elmer Brothers.
Your name?
Troy.
You're Troy from the road commission?
Yes, I'm the manager of the road commission.
Thank you.
Are we gonna get, uh, an estimate on the gravel? Over? Yeah, I, I'll talk to them about later, we'll bring it up in February.
Okay, Brower?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Zalinski?
Yes.
Should I answer myself? Ward, yes, you wanna answer for me? Davis?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion carries, uh, let us get for you, yeah. So I will reopen the public comment at seven thirty-five. Okay, I will close public comment at seven thirty-five, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, one second.
All in favor, uh, adjourn at seven thirty-five.
Thank you for your patience, for everybody here, for talking all this group.
Warmest, uh, public comment.